It's 5:30, I'm gonna call the City Council, regular City Council, to order. Was someone thumping Mr. Peacock on the shoulder? He can't hear, I know. That's why I'm just giving Don a hard time. Alright, I'm gonna call us to order, and Mr. Thurman is going to lead us in the pledge. Would you stand with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, sir. Our invocation is by Ward Hayes, the Valley Grove Baptist Church.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would y'all join me in prayer? Gracious Father, you've given us beautiful days to enjoy, we give you thanks. You've given us a beautiful and incredible community of which to be a part of, we give you thanks. We thank you for the citizens, we thank you for the leaders. Father, we pray that during this time of doing business, Lord, that you grant us wisdom, Father, to know and to understand, ears to hear, eyes to see. Father, your wisdom, that we may know what is best, what is right, what will benefit and bless, Father, this community that you've given us. Father, we pray that as citizens of this community, we will do well to serve well, to help one another. We thank you for the organizations and the churches of this community, Lord, that look out for others, and we pray, Father, blessings upon that. Father, may this city, may this community, bring you glory and bless others, we pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir, and thank you for what you do for the city of Steenaville. We do have a quorum tonight, we have one of our members who's vacationing in Florida on Skype tonight, so Brady's here. Is Alabama? Oh, it's not quite as fun. Not quite as fun. Shucks. Okay, we won't say much about Alabama. First item on the agenda tonight is Consider a Resolution, number 2019R...
Nineteen.
Nineteen. We read the resolution, and we'll see if we have a motion and a second vote. Whereas the city of Steenaville received a donation of $3,000 from the Steenaville Rotary Club. Whereas the donation is a combination of $1,500 from the Steenaville Rotary Club, as well as $1,500 from the Rotary District 5790 Grants Project Fund. And whereas the city of Steenaville has also dedicated a matching amount towards the improvement and development of a park located at East Collins Street on the Bossier River Trail, and where the park will be fully inclusive and serve children of all abilities. And whereas the park will be significantly improved by the contribution of the 2019 Rotary Youth Leadership Award Program Participants, as well as the future R-Y-L-A participants. Whereas the city of Steenaville is looking forward to many years of partnership with the Steenaville Rotary Club and R-Y-L-A. Now therefore, it be resolved that the monetary and in-kind contributions to the Steenaville Rotary Club are hereby recognized and applauded, and we, the undersigned, on behalf of all citizens of the city of Steenaville, express our gratitude, passed and approved this day. I guess I'll have to have a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Brandon makes the motion, I have a second. Mark seconds it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes. And we have the Rotary Club recognized tonight, once you come up here, and if you don't...
Mr. Mayor, to make it official, we've got a ceremonial check to present to the city of Steenaville.
I like holding thousands of dollars. Thousands of dollars, what a money. Thank you for what you did.
If I could take a quick moment, I got to talk to you a few months ago. We're about to be inundated with 130, 140 real sharp seniors in high school coming for this Rotary Leadership Camp, which will be hosted in Charlton after 18 years at Texas Women's University, and then we're moving in here, and I think we'll be able to keep it here in Steenaville and Charlton for many years to come. And one of the highlights is this community service project that the kids will work on, improving this new park area in Collins Street on the river. They'll be able to come back when they're adults and show their kids what they put together. So it's a real special thing, and I tell you that Steenaville Rotary Club is honored to be able to bring this outstanding young group of individuals to Steenaville and Charlton State University. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next item on the agenda is Citizen General Discussions, or anyone who'd like to make a presentation and talk to the City Council.
Hi there. I am Kaylee Pemberton with the Steenaville Downtown Merchants. I am president of our association, this is Lori Geiser, she is the vice president. And somewhere with us, we have Ashley Thurlbacher, she is our secretary. She didn't even know we were coming tonight, so this is a surprise to her. We are here tonight to just discuss a little bit about who we are, what we do, and figure out how we can build our relationship with the city and with the City Council to grow what we have going and what's happened in downtown. Our mission is to promote retail activity in downtown Steenaville, and I think right now, we probably have more retail activity in Steenaville than we have in quite a few years. We have 22-plus merchants on our membership list, and it's kind of great to see that kind of activity happen in downtown. So our goal is the retail activity, but secondary is beautification and the historical preservation of our downtown. So with that, we have created a few events downtown. We support some of the other events downtown, you know, sitting out on the square and some of the things that have started happening, and we love things happening on our square. So we love to see the activity, we love to see things happening, people downtown, people walking about, you know, and it's just, it's a good sight to see when we have it happening. Secondary on our list is the beautification. We have started with farmers market and events, like I said. We have hosted and created the farmers market in conjunction with the city and the chamber. We kind of take care of that and run that and support that. So we would love the community's support to keep that going and to keep it happening. We have recently had to open that up to handcrafted items, instead of just produce and plants, just because we needed more people, we needed more activity, we needed more things happening. So, you know, we love the support, and we want to see the community involvement, to see that grow. Beautification is kind of secondary on ours. We have taken over the planters downtown around the courthouse and around the square. We have hosted cleanup days where we, the merchants, have been down there cleaning up and doing. We would like to see that grow into some communities, some cities, some counties, some other support and some help to see that grow. Master Gardeners has also joined in to help us do that. They help us do some of the planning and some of the work and the labor to keep our downtown clean. The historical preservation, we know we all, most of our businesses are inside of historical buildings downtown. There is the facade program, so we would like to see that continue and grow as well, and our downtown revived to look the way that it should look. You know, we've gotten some historical grants recently. I think that we've got some sidewalk grants, some monies for some of that, so we would love to see that continue to grow as well. We just are here to let you know that we're here, we're Downtown Merchants, we want to stay here. Most of us live here, support the community, we're from the community, and we want it to grow, and we want to stay in business. So we need support, we need help, we need to grow our relationship with you guys to figure out ways to make that happen. We know that there's some great things happening in the future with tourism, but we're ready for some, we're here to make sure that those things do continue to grow and happen. Sidewalks, lighting. Brandon, what are some things we talked about the other day? There was, we had a whole list of things that we were... Christmas lights. We would love to see some things happening on our square for Christmas. And that, we can do a little bit, but together, we can all do a lot. So we are here to just grow that and see where we can go in the future and where we can grow as a community and together. So Lori, did I leave anything out?
I don't think so. I think at a later date, we'd like to pair up with just maybe three or four of you and have maybe a sidebar meeting to get more feedback from you guys. We just need to grow the amount of people coming. The way finding signs might really help. We get about 80% of the people that come in our shops are actually from out of town. So we need to get our own community back, you know, supporting. I think it was a real big push right when we first opened, but we need to get a lot more of our community downtown. Like she said, we love to see it when people are strolling and walking. So we just want to maybe pair up with you guys and get a little bit more information and see how we can work together.
Do you have any questions? Or Brandon's had some suggestions, talked to me several, several ideas are pretty good ideas, so we'll, I'm sure, have some opportunities to improve our relationship.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting us speak, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a report from Sundown on the Square Committee. Come on up here, ladies.
Mayor and councilmen, women, members. Thank you so much for having us here again. This will be our fifth year with Sundown on the Square, and we are happy to report to you all that because of our generous community, we have given the museum over $150,000 for improvements on the museum grounds, and the museum board is busy working, trying to make those improvements, and they are making improvements. It's just a slow process with older buildings and especially historical buildings. But we're here today to tell you about Sundown Square, which is October the 12th. I'll let Marion talk, so...
Yeah, this year, as Metta said, it's October the 12th, from 5:00 to 9:00 on the downtown square. We have a really exciting event, musicians lined up this year. Giovanni and the Hired Guns, which is a local group, will start the evening, well, the agenda, the afternoon, and then Daven James, a local entertainer that is very well-liked around here. And then our highlight performer is Gary P. Nun this year. And Gary P. is retiring, so this is kind of his farewell concert tour. So we're really excited about that, because we think he's going to be a big draw to the downtown square. Okay.
You know what, we didn't introduce ourselves. There may be people who don't know you all.
Do you think anybody here does it?
Yep, this is Patricia Wellman.
I'm Marion Cole.
And I'm Metta Cogger.
And I'm going to adjust my collar to match the rest of my...
We're trying to be young and cool.
Trying.
Anyway, we'll have, the event is free for you all that have been there, and of course, a lot of you all have helped us set up and get ready to have this each year, which we really appreciate, and we hope that some of you can be there again this year and help us. Yeah, Mark. But anyway, we'll have the children's area, we'll have the food area, we'll have the wine area, we'll have the music, and then we'll have activities for adults and children. So it's for everybody, we invite everybody to come and have a good time. It's, we do this for the community, and it's kind of our gift back to you all for being so generous. And we got, we gave each one of you all brochures. If there's anybody else that would like a brochure, we'd love to give you one. And left for any donations.
We have sponsorship levels in the brochure, the levels are listed, and there's tickets that are given, complimentary tickets to those who are sponsors, and appreciation certificates. We make it really easy to be a sponsor. Check the level, you'd like to be a sponsor. This is perforated, tear it off and return it, there's an enclosed envelope, return it in the envelope to us. And you will get, all the sponsors receive advertising on our website, which is sundownsquare.com. And then we also have Facebook, that we post our sponsors, and then, of course, advertising that evening during the event. And this year, Janice Horrock is coming back to be our emcee, so we're really excited about that.
If you want to volunteer, there's always an opportunity. We have over 250 volunteers that help us put this on.
High school, Charlton State University kiddos, and the community, community people. So without the volunteers, it wouldn't happen.
Thank you.
We appreciate y'all very much. Anybody have any questions or comments for this group? Just shows this group and the previous ladies bring a lot to Steenaville, Texas. We appreciate all y'all very much. Very much. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
I'll go ahead and tell you, Brady and I are going to challenge the rest of the council to jump in as well and sponsor this organization, this event. I won't throw the number out there, you can have Brady. He's not listening. Okay. He's in Alabama, listen to birds.
Just pick a number.
Okay, 500 bucks. 500 bucks. 500 bucks. We're gonna, we're gonna challenge everybody to 500 dollar contribution. Thank you very much. Next item, is a public hearing. We, the city still has received a petition from the First Baptist Church Steenaville requesting the abandonment of Barton Street between Green and Mason Streets. I'm gonna open up a public hearing and ask if there's anybody who'd like to come and speak on the event, or the request. I have one request from Dr. May.
Alright. If you're gonna start giving out money, I'm gonna ask if we can take up an offering too. I don't know if one of our deacons are here with an offering plate, but...
David's gonna sound, tell me no, don't do that.
Mayor, City Council staff, thank you so much for receiving our petition. I've had the privilege of being here in Steenaville for the last four years, and just love this community and all the exciting things that are happening. Last year, our church went through a strategic planning, had some very significant leaders in the church and in our community, including like Dr. DiTavio and others that led us through that process. One of those pillars involved facilities, reexamining our facilities, whether we should move out to the edge of town or stay here. And I think we've really decided we love this community, we want to be here in the center of things, and there's so much that goes on between the churches right around the square and the square, just like we've been hearing with Sundance and other activities. So our petition mainly comes to you because we do own most of the surrounding area there, and as you can read in your brief and those documents, we've had several, in fact, I even had somebody mention to me today, someone almost hit a lady on a cellphone walking across the street between those buildings. We have averaged about 550 in Bible studies on Sunday mornings, have a good number of senior adults that are having to maneuver through the brick street and also the curbs, and then we have children there, a lot of children every day in the Kinder Bridge, as well as on Wednesday nights. And so we have a security issue. We also have just a future development issue of being able to maybe connect those buildings with a hallway or corridor, so especially our senior adults don't have to go down into a street and back up and with different weather. So we're just presenting that to you, I know it's an initial step. We don't have a whole lot of details today. We don't have any specific plans for the future of that, but have thought in terms of safety, to be able to do with the ballards like Charlton has done, to kind of protect part of that area, and yet still allow some traffic flow coming in and out of Kinder Bridge and other activities. So just be available for any questions or anything you guys would have.
Any questions, Dr. May? Yes.
My memory is not very good, please help me. When was the new building built?
The first building was 1926. Then they came in the 50s, I think, and added on to that. It's been renovated several times, and then the Worship Center was built in 77, 78. In fact, you've probably seen some of the repairs around the oldest building. The engineering firm, we had, over spring break with that storm, we had a piece of concrete drop, and so the engineers came in and they put a camera in there showing some newspaper, I guess when those were formed around the top of that building of 1923. So a lot of history there, but that was 78, 78, when the Worship Center was built, and then the Skybridge. We then purchased the Paradigm Building and did about a half million renovation there, and then we got the Rutgers Building, and just our plans are to continue to beautify all of that facility and make it a nice part of this area of the city.
Any other questions?
So those buildings have been located as they are for 40-plus years, separated by the street.
Right.
Is this a new problem, or is there a significant increase in the pedestrian traffic across there now?
I think Councilman Nick, I think it's both. As you know, with cell phones, with technology, with distraction, with the lack of a lot of preparation in teaching people to drive and all that, I mean, it's just changed. I mean, things have changed, you see that all around, our law enforcement faces that all the time. But we also have more people, and we are using it every single day, so if Kinder Bridge kids are going back and forth, that becomes a safety issue. It has been a few years since the Skybridge has been hit. We had a light knocked off some years ago, and there were other repairs before that, but... So it's not a brand-new issue. So it's not just the safety issue, while that's one factor, it's also the ability to be able to build, because in order to add anything, we'd have setbacks from the road and other things, which this would allow a little more expansion of that. But still working with zoning and planning on all of that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
It would be, if this moves forward, your intention would be to permanently block that road, permanently close that section of roadway, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
One more thing, don't we have a utility movement through there?
Well, we have our staff report here in just a minute.
Okay, okay.
There is a water.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have a staff report?
Are you gonna do it, or am I? Alright. Finding out that I'm gonna do this. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The block of Barton does have a water line in it. Nick Williams is here, he can explain, a plan that he explained to me today. I don't want to take words out of your mouth, Nick, but would you like to step up and discuss this?
So we don't have a visual of it, but there is a six-inch water main that runs underneath the pavement from the north side to the south side. There is a, there's a couple of different options that they could pursue, one of which would be to literally cap off that line, because it is a network of connections on the south side. And so everything from the north connection at Green, as it goes toward Mason, would then ultimately be 100% a service line for that building, and then would be private. So that's an opportunity, that's just one thing to look at. If they wanted to build over the top of it, certainly they could relocate it or find some other method to install it, another location to put it.
Thank you, Nick.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this petition was submitted under City Ordinance 95 dot 52. It requires that the ordinance, or the ordinance requires that the petition must be signed by 25 registered voters of the city. The residential and voter registration status were verified by E. Redd County's Voters Registration Office. There are 11 properties within the 200 feet of the requested closing. Excuse me, seven of which are owned by the First Baptist Church. The remaining four property owners were sent letters to advise them of the church's position to abandon the 200 block of Barton Street. The petition is being brought before the council in accordance to Section 95 dot 55. Counsel, tonight's action is only a resolution to send this to P&amp;Z for study. It is not a decision on the merits of actually closing the street, or the pros or cons either way. What it is, is to start the process. What will happen is P&amp;Z will hear the case, and will make their determination and make a recommendation to counsel. I presume, well, certainly at a later date, I don't know if that'll be July or some other time. But again, the resolution that's coming up is simply to initiate this process.
Any discussion?
Mr. Barnes, one question that came to mind as Mr. Williams was speaking. If that line is capped and the service line is either relocated or moved, or whatever's necessary, I'm going to hope that that would be at the expense of the person that's requesting that this be vacated?
Well, certainly the entity. But yes, sir, the church would be responsible to pay for any of that. Again, one of the things that Mr. Williams suggested to me is that these six inches be abandoned without deference to the church's connections. And then, once the street is ceded to them, that becomes a private line, and they maintain that line.
Okay. And compensation for the right-of-way itself?
That is determined by an appraisal. There are steps to, that are required by the state of Texas to ensure that the city receives fair market value of any property that's abandoned. That's included in the 95 dot 55 process.
And that will be part of the consideration for P&amp;Z, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's why I kind of fumbled on when it will come back to y'all, because sometimes the appraisals get backed up and take a while.
Mark?
Thank you.
So has there been any discussion of traffic count? Can we get some traffic count numbers down Barton Street?
Absolutely.
I think my problem with this, we've had this conversation before, is strictly a question of convenience for everybody else in town. I mean, your safety issue, Dr. May, I mean, there's no question. I've changed the way I go to church to, so I'm not part of the problem there. And so I know what you're talking about. But if you put a timeline in and you look at the time that that would need to be, that roadway would need to be shut down solely for safety issues, and start today and go forever, that would be a fraction of the total amount of time. And all that other time, it would be, could be at least, an inconvenience to other citizens. So I think that's something that we need to, we need to take a look at.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Williams, if we could, maybe, normally we do it for several days at a time, maybe do it for a couple of weeks, that'll give us a couple of Sundays and significant data for the rest of the time.
Other questions?
My only other issue would be, because of the proximity of the police station and firehouse one, make sure that we're taking a look at any potential impact to their operation.
I have discussed it with Chief King, however, I've not had the opportunity to discuss it with Chief Chu yet.
Thank you.
I did have a citizen call me about this yesterday and point out that this was a thoroughfare that ended up at the rec hall, and that they consistently went from Charlton Street to the rec hall on that. I also want to point out that it goes to the tax office. So I think that this is a very well-traveled street, and we're going to inconvenience a lot of our citizens. This matter came up a couple of years ago, where the railroad wanted to basically close a block of McNeil and a block of Belknap. And we didn't do that, and it turned out that we now have a major apartment complex going in between McNeil and Washington, and had we closed that street, it would be a mistake. And we cannot do that. Once it's done, it's done, and it's forever. So we need to take that to consideration.
Anybody else? And I'll call us out of the public hearing then, and bring us to item number five, which is Consider a Resolution to Approve a Resolution, 2019R11, is that right?
V20.
20. To initiate the abandonment of Barton Street between Mason and Green Streets.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mark makes the motion, will you approve the resolution?
Second.
If he seconds it, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed.
No.
Okay, we have one motion, one, okay. It was seven and one then. Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Item number six, Consider Approval of Ordinance Number 2019, Mending Building Permit Fees, Staff Report.
Good evening. Staff is recommending the attached fee schedule for residential building permits based on the enacted state law by adding Section 214.907, prohibited on certain value-based building permit and inspection fees. Value-based building permit and inspection fees. The city is required to change the way that residential properties are charged for building permits. The proposed fee schedule is calculated to yield similar fees collected based on previous projects and fees. Commercial building permit fee schedule will not change. Changes will only affect residential and multifamily dwellings.
Any questions, staff?
So this has, of course, it's mandated by the legislature, but we've done our best, most surprising, should be right in line. This is not an increase, this is just to get compliant with the state legislature.
That's right.
Any other questions?
Does this bring us into compliance, as far as we know, with the new set of regulations that have been adopted?
Yes, it will. As far as I've been told, it will bring us into compliance.
And again, it only affects the residential, is that correct?
Residential and multifamily dwellings.
Which is the same as residential.
Yes.
Anybody else? Mayor. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 2019 oh...
Sixty.
Fifteen or sixteen?
Sixteen.
Second.
Alan makes a motion to approve item number six, which is ordinance number 2019 oh sixteen, you said? And Brandon seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go. Motion passes. Second item, next item is Tourism and Visitors Bureau. Julie, can I make us a report?
We have a couple of hot requests. One is from the Cowboy Capital Rodeo. And we have a couple of representatives here with us, Sheila Williams and James Andres. And it's worth noting that the Cowboy Capital's in their 50th year this year, so they're planning to really pull out all the stops. In committee, well, we didn't really have a committee.
We didn't have a committee. We only had a work session.
Correct. So they are asking for $20,000, a little more than last time. Because it is their 50th year, we have $15,000 in our budget.
And we're the title sponsor. And last year was our first year's title sponsor at a budget of $15,000. And we have no recommendation coming forward to the council because we did not meet in committee. It was only a work session, so.
Well, do you have a recommendation then, councilman, councilwoman?
I recommend that we did the $15,000 we have budgeted. I'm open to whatever the council desires.
Is that in form of a motion?
Is that a motion?
Okay, in form of a motion?
Do you want me to put in form of a motion?
I'd like to.
I make the motion that we give the Cowboy Capital Rodeo $15,000 in hot funds.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mark makes a second. Any further discussion?
Question.
Yes, sir.
If we do this, will we still be the title sponsor? Because it's not their... Okay.
Any other discussion? Questions?
And they were very good about making sure the whole community knew we were the title sponsor.
They were fantastic.
But they did a great job.
And for the questions, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes.
Mayor, if I may, as a point of clarification, I want them to understand that we support this, but our funds are somewhat limited. And because this is what we budgeted, we're going to try to follow that more closely and try to stay within those guidelines. Hopefully, next year, we'll be able to have a larger amount of resources to work with. But thank you so much for what you do.
Julie?
The second item is Epic Rodeo Experience. This is a new event that Stephenville is lucky enough to have moved from Oklahoma to Stephenville. They want to sort of piggyback right after the rodeo and involve a lot of the participants in their clinic. We have Amanda Schaefer here, if you have any questions. Their hotel occupancy tax fund request is at $10,000.
Any questions for Julie?
If you looked at their packet, they're budgeting $5,000 to $6,500 for advertising. So I think maybe considering we have limited funds available this time of the year, we might want to consider somewhere in that $5,000 to $6,500.
Are you making that as a motion, Mr. Tresson?
I can.
If you'd like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we contribute $6,500 from the hot fund to this rodeo.
Do I hear a second?
Well, it's a rodeo experience.
Do I hear a second? Second, is there another recommendation?
It fails for lack of a second.
Yes, fails for lack of a second. Anybody have another motion they'd like to make?
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that we offer $3,000 to the Epic Rodeo event for this first-time event. And I'd make that as a motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Sturman seconds the motion. Any discussion?
Prior to our vote, could you tell us what our balance is in that fund?
Monica?
Julie, you have it?
Yes, $13,475.
So this would take it to 10.
That's the amount that's not already budgeted.
Undesignated.
Okay, all right.
So that takes us to $10,000. Any other discussion?
I'll just continue to recommend that we find a method to do this instead of just picking a number out of the air, which...
She's working on it.
I know she is. I just, for the public knowledge. We need to find a way to validate this number and go with it.
I've had a recommendation, and we'll, when we get to committees later, I've had some recommendations on how to do that, so we'll get that to the committee. But it's a good point, Brandon. Any other discussion? Here number two, to vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes.
And that concludes tourism.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Julie. Planning and Zoning Commission. Karen, double duty. We should have got you in the same order. See, we have to stand up, sit down.
So the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved closing Wiley Street and recommended to go to council at the regular meeting held on May 15. The layout of Green Acres was previously approved with the planned development PD zoning classification of Green Acres addition being lots 2 through 21, Block 9 of the Green Acres addition on April 2, 2019. It was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the March 20, 2019 meeting. The property has appraised value at $23,000 an acre.
Any questions? Right here, now we'll enter into a public hearing. Any other further discussion? If anyone wants to talk in favor or opposed to the ordinance, the request? Here now, we'll close the public hearing and consider an approval of the ordinance 29 oh...
Seventeen.
Seventeen. I just want to make a comment. This was a, you know, the staff worked really hard with the landowner, the developer, and the neighbors. And it was a really good compromise that happened there. Appreciate Brandon's help on that as well. Just my comment.
Another issue, Mayor, that we might want to remember is that we're considering abandonment of one right-of-way, but that has been replaced by the developer in another location
Correct.
for the traffic flow. So I think that's an important consideration.
Absolutely.
I would make a motion, Consider Approval of Ordinance 2019 oh seventeen.
Second. Motion by Brandon and second by Nick. Any further discussion? Here now, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Brady, I keep getting a time lapse there. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Parks and Leisure Services. Where's Jennifer? There she is, over in the corner. She has a pretty fun thing to talk about tonight.
Sorry, I brought my whole laptop up here. So the first thing we're, oh, okay, there we go. All right, so the first thing we're discussing tonight is summer day camp and after-school. It's a program we're looking to start in partnership with the school district this fall. We'll offer after-school care, three hours a day, five days a week, on holidays excluding the major ones like Christmas Day and New Year's Day. We'll offer break camps for spring break and fall camp. And then we'll offer 12 weeks of summer camp during the summer. So we've done all the cost estimates. Monica is vigilantly auditing my spreadsheet, so we came...
Just see if they are like that.
Yeah, thank God. And so we're going through those final numbers, but we're very positive that the numbers for the fees that we're proposing will capture and make us a cost-neutral program.
Any questions?
Your intention is that it actually be cost-neutral to the city
Yes, sir.
while providing a service to parents who have children that they need assistance with instead of going to a daycare or something like that?
Yes, sir.
And you will have programs of various kinds to occupy them?
Yes. One of the questions we asked in our survey was, in addition to just attending camp, would you be interested in your children participating in extracurriculars? So participating in an archery program or an outdoor naturalist program or a ballet class or a cooking class, we would incorporate that, which would be a separate program, but it would be blended into ours. In the summer, we'll bus kids to swimming lessons and do things like that so that they can definitely get a great experience.
I just want to say, I think it's a great cooperation between the city and the ISD for something that's desperately needed for children in this community. Affordable daycare, I have two, and it is crazy expensive. For us to find a way, cost-neutral, to work with other organizations in the city to deliver the services is awesome, and I commend you all for that. And I think your numbers, you're going to have so many kids sign up for this, you better be ready for that, but...
We'll come to you for budget adjustments for our cost.
As long as it pays for itself, it's great.
That gets you approval there.
It'll be cost-neutral still, but the numbers will have to be edited.
I just think it's a great thing for our citizens, so, thank you.
Yes, sir. The, what the school district is providing is the facility and the transportation, correct?
Well, the transportation will be a fee that we absorb because they contract that service out.
Anybody else? Hey, they're asking for us to approve the implementation of the summer day camp and after-school programs. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, sir. I'll second it.
Marcus makes that motion. Can we split that? No, we'll go ahead. Give Carla that one. Any further discussion? Here now, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Oh, Brandon, I'm sorry, Brady? I'll let Brady vote.
Yep, I'm here.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, approve authorization for a Techstock Green Ribbon Project.
Yes, so this project is to refurbish and replace the seven existing green ribbon median beds that we have around town. The projected cost for the program is $400,000, which is the max that Techstock grants for this program. We have been given some pretty good positive feedback on what our initial application looks like. So tonight, we're just looking for approval to do that full grant submittal.
I just have one question. We are going to fix that one area on, or Washington, and three sets, so it doesn't wash out all the time?
Yes.
Okay. Any others got questions?
Jen?
Go ahead.
Question that I had, and that has to do with the ongoing maintenance and operation of those. Granted, I think this grant, in reading through it, provides for a fairly low maintenance type of operation, other than just mowing and everything. But plants die. I mean, we've seen that out there with those. And is that going to go into just the regular budget for Parks and Recreation? Or how are you going to do that? Because what we've got hasn't been maintained very well.
Yes, sir. So currently, that is a contracted service. We use an outside vendor to maintain those beds. The current contract that just ended, because as you can see, those beds are not currently being maintained, is $13,000 annually. I don't believe that that was probably an adequate funding amount for us to maintain those beds with the annual replacements or seasonal color. However, when we replace the beds, we'll use more perennials and drought-tolerant plant material so that we can maintain those beds at a more cost-effective rate.
Other questions?
Is this a matching grant or is it 100%?
It's 100% funded. Now, if we locally let it, so we local-let, that would be us paying it. We pay all the front, all the costs upfront, and then we're reimbursed. But if the state lets it, they'll pay all the costs, but we have to jump through their hoops.
Anybody else?
What would be your preferred method there, then?
That would be up to Monica, allowing us to have a proper funding. Currently, with our funding, we would probably have to do the state let. But preferred would be local-let.
And the landscape architect, who will choose the landscape architect?
We'll probably do an RFQ. Right now, for the submittal, we have Catherine Utech doing the submittal. So she did all of our bed design, hoping that she will get the RFQ if it goes out to bid.
Because I think, just like Jill pointed out, we had a problem because we didn't use perennials and we didn't use drought-tolerant plants that...
And the designs we're submitting, that was the number-one thing that we proposed. And it's actually part of the program requirements now.
Anybody else? Do I hear a motion?
So move. We approve going for the grant.
Second.
Gerald makes a motion and Carla seconds it? Any further discussions? Here now, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes. Next item. Thank you, Jen. Next item on the agenda is Monthly Budget Report. Ms. Harris. You have good news?
It's always good news, so far. If it's, if I ever don't show up, that means it was bad news.
There you go. We'll send out Jason looking for you.
So these are the budget review for the financial statements ending April 30, which is seven months into our fiscal year. For our property taxes, we received $25,000, which is $260,000 or 4.56% over the funds collected through April of last year. The county usually collects about 96% to 97% of our property taxes through April. So the $5.95 million collected is 98.55% of our $6.04 million that we budgeted for this fiscal year. We received $456,000 in sales tax in April, which is $48,000 over our target budget through April. We received $279,000 or 8.09% more than the funds received through April of last year. For hot funds, we received $247,000 in revenue in April, which is a 34% increase over the $184,000 received in revenue last year. We spent $164,000 in expenditures in April as compared to $184,000 last year. These numbers do include our revenue and expenditures for Mula Fest as well as interest income. The target budget for our operating revenue is $14.9 million. We received $17.6 million in revenue through April, which is $2.77 million over our budget due to property taxes, sales tax, and our interest income. The target budget for our operating expenditures is $11.8 million. We received $10.4 million through April, which is $1.4 million under our budget. The operating revenue received last year was $16.5 million as compared to the current year's $17.6 million, which is $1.1 million increase, which is due to property taxes, sales and other taxes, service charges, and our investment interest. Our operating expenditures last year were $10.1 million. The current year's $10.4 million, which is a $261,000 increase. Some of our additional expenditures were wages, the special election, outside professional fees, maintenance, child safety grants, wages in advertising, and the hot fund, and wages in economic development programs, and the SITA fund. For our new programs, the stage structures have been purchased for the bleachers at the ball field. The computers for the patrol units have been purchased. The dump trucks for utilities and streets have been delivered. And the utility master plans and eastside sewer project are still progressing. Any questions?
A question for Monica. I don't guess we have to approve a report, do we?
That's correct.
Okay. Here now, thank you very much, Monica. Okay, everybody get your phones out.
He doesn't have it yet.
I'm sorry?
He doesn't have the report yet. On the phones?
No, he needs to have a phone. Everybody get your phones out because I've told Mr. Sanford that if he were to dance tonight, that we're going to videotape it and put it on Facebook for the world to see. And his evaluation is coming when?
Already happened.
When is your evaluation due?
Next year.
Next year, okay. That's why I want to make sure it's in perpetuity on video.
Yeah, exactly. No, I am here, last month, if you guys recall, I talked to you about this kind of coinciding with my first year here back in Stephenville, but first year with SITA. And I thought that it would be wise for us to kind of discuss together or at least talk a little bit about some of the things that have happened over the last year. Now, it's going to be, the natural fallback is to say, well, look what Jeff's done. And that's not what this is about. Because I think the real story here in the last 12 months has been the collaboration that we have had with the city of Stephenville in terms of the council and administration. And so that's going to be sort of the recurring theme as I talk about this. But I am going to talk about some of the actions and such. We had to take a little bit of an inventory. As I look back at what we've done over 12 months, what's important in every single thing that we do is to make sure that we're a step further than we were before, if not several steps. So we always want to be moving in the direction, a forward direction. So we look at the progress, we look at directions, successes, and of course, opportunities because obviously, when you do this, you look at some areas where you think that you can continue to improve and continue to look at where we can make the most impact for our citizens here. So I wanted to talk, and Karen's going to help me. You want me to do it? You want me to do it? It's a little hard to read, and I'd be happy to provide any of you guys with this specifically. But I think the first thing that we did when we came here was to make sure we were listening. After being in business, I guess, the first three or so years prior to my arrival, or two and a half, I guess, at that time, it was important for us to go through and listen to a variety of people, including many of you, and for those that are new to the council, we certainly talked to your predecessors. And we tried to sit down and talk with academics, we talked with folks of all, my own board, of course, people all across this community, to try to get a feel for what economic development meant to them. I thought that was a very important piece. There are several different groups, and it's ongoing. We'll continue to go down that path of listening, but at some point, you have to take what you're hearing and try to put that into play. I think the next thing was to develop, then, once you listen, what those tools might be that we could utilize to impact our community. And you see, the very first one is the team. When I talk about the team, I'm not talking about the SITA team specifically, I'm talking about the economic development team, and that includes now, all of you sitting up there in your seats. This is part of the team process. Now, we all have a different role, just like in a regular sporting event, everybody, you know, you have somebody who's coaching, and somebody who's carrying the ball here, or somebody's going to play a defensive position, or whatever the case may be, you can put it in whatever analogy you want. But all of us have a different role, and part of our role that we, I think, developed over the last 12 months was what SITA would do. And specifically, a lot of that is chasing that rabbit down the rabbit hole, making sure we capture, vet out, everything that we possibly could, and then bring to council, along with continual consultations with city management, the kinds of projects that we need to bring to you to help develop and grow our tax base. So it's different things that you see up on the board, different things that we have put in place together, that we think that are going to help us, not only in this last 12 months, but will help us moving forward as well. In addition to developing the team, or as part of developing the team, it was really important that we looked at how do we work together, not just what role, not just we do this, you do that, but how does all that kind of intertwine, and how can we start to think about the kinds of roles that we have together? Through, I don't know, I think we've had over 20 meetings or so together in various capacities, to talk about projects. We've had everything from workshops on projects, the regular updates that we give here, the regular updates in the executive session, one of which we'll do today, where we'll talk about a number of projects. Alan and I get to meet very frequently. I think today, we tore each other up on...
Three times.
Just three, yeah, just three times today, and that's becoming pretty regular. And I think that's one thing that's important, that you guys realize, is that you have entrusted Alan and his staff to do certain things, just as my board has instructed me and my staff to do things. And if we can coordinate that, that by the time we get to you at some of these meetings, that we all know what the next steps are and what decisions, and try to provide you with the best amount of information for you to make those kinds of decisions. We've worked with some of the grants. One of the other pieces of what we've done are some economic development grants, from facade grants to economic development grants. Some of these were in place prior to my arrival, but we had to finish them after I got here. There are also some workforce development, which we'll talk about on the next slide, but we also have had one 380 agreement, and we look to have, hopefully, some more here in the very near future, as we continue to discuss some of these economic development projects. A lot of the things with infrastructure and engineering and so forth, again, started. Those are some of the things that we all talk about as a role for SITA, but also as a role for the council, and we've been able to, I think, work into how that looks in various projects. So I'm very proud of what we've done there together. Oops, excuse me. Going back on workforce development, as you all know, when we stepped in here, you start to dip your toes into different pools. When we got here, we really thought that we were doing economic development. I've talked about this in front of you before. We're going to do the primary job creation, and the first thing we realized was that there were a number of jobs, hundreds of jobs, that weren't filled of our existing folks, so it didn't make a lot of sense to go chasing those primary jobs immediately. But the council needed a good turn into the ad valorem and sales tax piece, to try to collect more funding without raising taxes for our citizens. So I think we answered that call in trying to go out there and look at those kinds of projects. But part of it also, we had to address our existing businesses and how we could get a channel or pathway towards our workforce development folks. We've met with, the biggest thing that we've met, or that we've talked to you about, is our Fort Hood Alliance and the Soldiers for Life program. The reality is, that's a start, that's not the completion. That is one way that we've been able to take a look at a pathway for those coming out of service and looking for jobs that have a certain skill set. We've been working with our HR directors to try to figure out what their needs are and try to pair those up. This has not been a full-time effort on our part, but it has been something that we have addressed throughout the course of the last 12 months. We're also working, by the way, with Ranger and Tarleton to try to look at other opportunities for future jobs, and that's not really on the deal, but I think that's going to be an important piece as we move forward. Another part is taking all this information and addressing certain needs, but then also going into information. How do we take what we have and become a repository for that information, a place where everyone can come to it in one singular place and have consistent information? Well, some of that, we're, I think, I think we have a long way to go in how we collect the information, because the data that's available out there right now is significant. And it's, there are companies out there that we already deal with in, to some degree, in fact, I talked to Carla just before, and I'll get with Julie, we're working with these guys on some tourism points, so that we could try to provide you with more data, provide them with more data, that, some of that's come about with some of your questions, that, with some of the tourism grants and those things. If we can help provide some of that information on traffic and expenditures and those kinds of things, I think that could be a very positive move for us down the road, in terms of how we spend our money to get more people into our community. But there are some other things. Historic tax credits, we've already worked with several groups, or a couple of groups on that. Opportunity zones, same way. In fact, there's another opportunity that came our way in the last couple of weeks on opportunity zone that may impact us in a dramatic way. We've talked with Alan about that as well. New markets tax credits, another tool in our toolkit. We've certainly been able to look at JAP analysis, and that's helped us whenever we're starting to talk about retail and other things, to see what we're missing, what is leaving our community, and therefore, how do we capture some of that to bring back into our community, either through new companies or to our existing ones. I think one of the most important ones of late, that's, that I'm very proud that this council has acted upon, and one I'm very proud to see come through, because I know this is something that was discussed years ago. But we finally, in the last few months, were able to get this going, as far as the TIRS or tax increment, well, the TIF piece, I know you don't like to use the TIRS word, Doug, so I, Mr. Mayor, so I, using the TIF piece and the tax increment financing, is a way that we were able to help fund infrastructure projects and other projects without impacting the taxpayer. And I think that's an important piece. We've been able to do some of these projects together without going to our citizens and saying, hey, we're going to, we want you to pull more out of your pocket. Instead, we're coming up with other creative ways to create that revenue, and then also utilize the revenue to complete some projects that I think we've all agreed we're very, very far behind on, but we're going to catch up. And I'm very, very excited about that. Some of the other economic development projects, as you see, these are just a dashboard of it. These are, this is a seamless work effort on all of our parts in this room, from developers that are not in this room, and other people that bring ideas, or that we go out and get, to the vetting process, to management, and the things that we might need to do from that standpoint, to the council, for you to decide. Hopefully, you can, when you make decisions, you're deciding between a good and a good. And when that happens, we're able to move forward in, again, growing our community. There have been 12 partnerships thus far. Obviously, I can't discuss some of those, we'll be discussing some in executive committee today. There's been some industrial projects, which are in the pre-development stage, some of y'all have been to those meetings. We have three multi-use development projects, which will encompass over 40 acres. Housing multi-use student living project, which is already moving dirt, we're excited about that. Local manufacturing expansions, unmanned aerial systems is not on there either. You know, we're talking about some of those things. That's a collaboration with Tarleton and Ranger College right now, that is picking up some speed. It's something that's going to be interesting, but I think that'll impact curriculum down the road. In fact, I know it well, because there's already classes being formed right now. Some of the regional involvement, you know, whenever we do these things, we also have to make sure, and we've been instructed, to make sure that we're reaching beyond the four walls of Steenaville. And so we have some of these other groups that we've been very active in, and have been able to utilize their resources and expand our reach into these areas. The TMCN, in fact, Julie, we've talked about, y'all have had some stuff too through tourism. The Texas Midwest Community Network, we've taught some economic development and got some ideas from some of their folks on that one. Of course, the COG in Arlington, I've been appointed to the Economic Development District there through the COG, and of course, the ATIP Foundation, which you hear us talk about nearly every month, talking about the agricultural piece and the technology side of that, and how that's going to expand not only industry, but an industry cluster that will start right here in Steenaville. One of the, excuse me, one of the areas I think that we can do a better job, but we have dipped our toes into, is entrepreneurship piece. That was one thing that was given to us as something that we needed to look at, you know. In addition to reaching out there, like on the last slide, we also have to make sure that we're reaching into our own homegrown, our economic gardening piece, not only of existing businesses, but those that want to start a business. There aren't a lot of tools in place for entrepreneurs, and so we have to have those discussions, we're starting to have those discussions. Obviously, the most visible thing are the, is the Tarleton Program, Entrepreneurs of E-Rath, of which we're a major sponsor, and participated on several levels this year, and I think that was hugely successful again. But that's just one little minor step. I think there are other ways that we can reach into there, into that arena. There's a, there's a space that a lot of people want to play in, but are not sure how to take that first step. And so the entrepreneurship piece, as a former entrepreneur, I understand that many of you on this table, or up at the top, have dipped your toes there as well. What announced that, starting today, and I have no other information, because we've had one meeting, Tarleton will be one of the first to, and they came to our office to talk about this today, how we can take something like the business plan competition, but develop a program that will go into our public schools. And that is our next step, is to take what has been a college level and up kind of a deal, and go into our public schools, and start to look at the young minds of our community, and how they can start to get excited about entrepreneurship and investing in themselves, but doing it the right way. Obviously, one of the biggest things that we do is in marketing. That's our biggest piece of the puzzle. And some of the things that we have that have been visible are, I went too many pages online, excuse me. This is where we go into the national presence piece. We take what Steenaville is, and we start to go out there. I think we're just hitting the tip of the iceberg on marketing. But this is where, and Mr. Barnes joined us, we've given reports on this to you guys, and I welcome any other questions whenever we get outside of here, we can talk more about our experience in Vegas, for example, with 29,000, 30,000, 39,000, whatever it was, of our closest friends, and over 1,500 booths, where we made an impact there. And I think, Alan, you can probably back us up on this, there wasn't a single appointment, and we kept it pretty busy, didn't we, from Sunday till Thursday? Now, a single person had not heard of Steenaville, of the people that we talked to. Now, there are people that haven't, and that's our goal, is to reach those folks as well. But that's the, those seeds that we start to plant are the ones that start to come back and say, okay, I want to know about this place, and I want to know how we can invest, if indeed, it's the right time. We made an impact, not just an impression, and I think that's an important difference in our effort there. But we also have it statewide, regional. It doesn't have to always be on these national scales, statewide and regional are there as well. We are involved very heavily in the Texas side of things. But I think we also, I put on this particular one the legislative day. While that's not particularly marketing per se, it is an effort where we all pull our collective resources and go down to Austin, and again, try to make an impact in Austin, amongst several hundred other cities, of course, but I think it was the right move to do it. And I appreciate that many of you that participated with us this year, that was an interesting time for us. Next step, and this is another area that we started to dip our toes into, and I think that we have a lot of room to grow in here, but our business retention efforts are starting to flourish a little bit. As we've talked to some of them, I've had some very good news from one of our manufacturers that has, that contacted us just this week. We were the first ones they contacted, in fact, before they even contacted corporate about some contracts and some other things that they have that will potentially keep them here long-term. And that's a very exciting thing for us, it's exciting for, I think, you know, manufacturing's always scary, it's high wealth-producing jobs, but when they go away, you also feel it a lot more, don't you? And so those are the things that we have to really work on, and I feel good about where we've been in that area. We've taken some of the data that we have, we've been communicating with our HR departments around and trying to see, that's more on the workforce piece, but also some of the management, the CEOs and others, and plant managers and so forth, on some of the, to find out how we can help them. And what we're finding is more and more, on a regular basis, they're calling us before we even get to them sometimes, and saying, hey, just want to give you an update, not even to report bad, just say, want to give you an update of some of the great things that are happening here, so you'll know. So that's an important piece. I didn't mention one of the other things in here, and I know it was on the slide, I don't recall which slide it was, but there was an important piece there, and I think, Brandon, to your credit, and Jeremy, whenever we started meeting with some of these landowners, I think what's going to be particularly interesting and important about those meetings, they will grow with importance and value over the course of time. Because now that these projects are starting to take hold, and some of these other projects that we've been working and nurturing and working together on, what we're seeing is that there's going to be a big use for other land that's available within the city limits of Steenaville. There's going to be other reasons to look at infrastructure in a different way than perhaps we've ever looked before. The priorities of the council and the priorities of the city will start to take shape as we look into that area, too. So I think I commend you guys for leading that process and allowing us to participate as well in some of that land development, but also land usage process. So thank you, guys. The last slide I have, and then I'll get out of your hair, sorry, Mayor, is just a little bit, I was asked this by one of the council members just yesterday, that, hey, if you're going to report on this, talk a little bit about where you were and where you are. And one of the things that is important is that, you know, when I got here, we were managing about 40, 40 so, 40 to 50 million dollars in projects, that are, some of which are starting to come to fruition, as you well know. And now the portfolio is over 300 million, and continues to grow. Of course, some of those, as they develop and start breaking ground and things go to fruition, we'll get them off the list and continue to add, so that number will jump up and down. But the important piece is that we continue to grow the platform for where economic development is and can be in the future. We're building the bench to make sure that over the course of time, we have things that can open and open and open and open in our community, create jobs, create wealth for the community, and allow the city to continue to prosper. So those are some of the things, we're continuing to look, looking at what we need to do in the next 365 days. I know it's a brief dashboard there, I could go on for hours, I know you don't want me to, but with that, I'll close my report and open it up for any questions, or if you've had enough of me, that's fine, too.
Any questions for Jeff?
I did have one question. In the Fort Hood partnership, have we actually placed anybody in a position yet?
I do know this, I believe so. What we've done from that, and we'll follow up, Carla, I think that's a fantastic question. One of the things that we wanted to do is facilitate, and so we've got this, we've provided a list of over 100 names, I believe, and Ashley, I've got to give her the biggest credit on this, to the, to those folks with emails, with all their information, and then let them kind of make the love connection. So that's, we've stepped out of it a little bit. I do know that... I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to defer and forgive my ignorance on it, what I do know is that once we kind of got everything and facilitated, our next step in what we're going to look for in workforce development is continue to find out what somebody's needs are, where we might find a pipeline, and get them together.
Other questions? Appreciate it, Jeff.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda are two important items. One is consider election of mayor pro temp. The way we do that is we'll take motion, a motion from the floor.
I'd like to make a motion. I nominate Mark McClintock for mayor pro temp.
I'm making a motion of Mark McClintock?
I'm going to respectfully...
Decline?
Ask that my name be taken away from consideration. I appreciate it, everyone.
Well, you're at every meeting, so we really appreciate your...
And so I'm trying to get other people involved, so...
Okay.
I think the pro temp, there are responsibilities beyond just, you know, conducting meetings in the absence of the mayor, there are ex officio responsibilities, and I certainly expect that my pro temp would be, would take those responsibilities seriously. And to that end, I'd like to nominate Mr. Nix.
Mark makes a motion to nominate Mr. Nix for mayor pro temp. We have other nominations.
I would like to nominate Brady Pendleton.[1671.88]
Brandon? I guess at this point, we can, we'll take them one at a time and vote on them, is that the way?
We've done it.
Every way? Yeah, I know what we said before. Okay. What I think we ought to do, then, is we have two nominations, Alan Nix and Brady Pendleton. What I'll do is, I'll just list the first name, Mr. Nix, and ask for who wants to not, vote for Mr. Nix to be mayor pro temp, and the same thing for Brady Pendleton. All in favor of Mr. Nix being mayor pro temp, would you raise your hand? Okay, we have two. Everybody in favor of Brady Pendleton being mayor pro temp, raise your hand, please. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, with that, then we'll take Mr. Pendleton, will remain, I didn't even ask you to vote, Brady. Want to vote?
He may be frozen.
He's frozen, okay.
I hope he's frozen, to be real honest with you.
What can I say? He's stuck in space. There you go. It's probably good that we didn't let him vote on this one anyway, so. All right, with that, Mr. Pendleton will remain as mayor pro temp for one more year. Congratulations, Mr. Pendleton. Next item is you have in front of you a list of nominations for committees, or recommendations for committees. I took everybody's recommendations, and I tried to get everybody their one and two. And sorry, new guys, y'all kind of got the ones that everybody else didn't want, I guess, in a sense. But I tried as best I could to give people nomination, what they recommended they be on the committees. I want to say that I appreciate very much, I heard this from most folks that responded, that they said, you know, Doug, do whatever you think you need to do, put him on a committee that serves the city of Stephenville best. So, I tried to match those together, and so you have a list in front of you. And is there any discussion about the committee nominations?
Mayor, I move that we approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the committee nominations, or committee appointments as recommended. Any other discussion? See to vote, all in favor, say aye. Oh, I have to have a second on that? Do I have to have a second?
I second.
Oh, you did, okay. Carla, second. All in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed. And Brady is phased out on us, so I guess we won't vote. Okay, you now have your new committees' appointments. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. They're here a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Carl makes a motion, and Mark seconded. Any further discussion? You're not seen to vote, all in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed. Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Comments by city manager, I'll say administrator again, there you go, I got to practice that one.
Call me whatever you want to, sir.
No, wait a minute.
You'll answer.
I'll answer. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we are taking applications for planning and zoning, board of adjustment, SEDA, parks and rec, tourism, and I think that's all until June fifteenth. Stacy can give you the details on that.
I'm sorry.
I see you to apply.
We're accepting applications for citizen boards and committees. We are looking for SEDA, board of adjustment, P and Z, since three of them are now sitting up here. We also have parks and rec, and the tourism and visitors advisory boards. So, you can find those applications on our online portal. Listen those in, and contact me with any questions.
On the tourism advisory board, we had an opening because we couldn't find a hotel person to agree to sit on the board. I think Julie now has found someone, so that's why we have an opening on that board.
Mr. Mayor, to inform the public, in the consent agenda, the council changed the July, council meeting from July second to July ninth. That's, a lot of folks traveled the week of July fourth, and at that time, it was, it was suggested that we change that. We have council meetings on July eighteenth at five thirty. The committee meetings, I'm sorry, all of them except for nominations, and nominations will meet on June twenty-fifth at five thirty. Mr. Mayor, that's what I have.
Thank you, sir. Comments by council members. Mark?
Julie, Jen, Jesus, all the people movers, everybody involved on the Mula Fest, wow, thank you so much.
Well, I second that, it was awesome. I heard such wonderful comments, not only from people in the community who attended, but also from the food vendors, they were very pleased with attendance and their sales. So, I look forward to next year, to a bigger, better Mula Fest, even. The museum is going to have an event on June the fifteenth, they call it a peek at the past. They will have a reenactor at one of the buildings, talking to you from a historical perspective, as a person who might have lived in the Berry House. So, it's all day on Saturday, June the fifteenth, so you might make plans to visit the museum that day. Thank you.
Same on the Mula, great job, especially the community volunteers that came out, that was really great. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to piggyback on what Mark and them have said, because I've already visited with a couple of the ladies personally, but I want to commend all of our city employees, because we had people literally from every department down there that were working diligently with traffic control, fire, and all the different things that had to happen to make it a successful event.